Okay, we have the necessary forum to do the business here. So I'm gonna call the special city council meeting for Tuesday, March 11th, 2025 to order. Would I ask for a roll call, please?
Raza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Solfa.
Wolf.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley. Uwer. Serone. Vocal singer.
Here.
So that's 10.
So we have 10, right?
Yes.
So we needed eight. We had to wait a couple of minutes till we got it all in here, so we are in business. All right. Reminder, everyone, if you're going to address the city council tonight from the audience, please come up and use the podium and please speak into the mic because this is being televised and recorded. And without that, it's kind of government without hearing. So we need to get that, making sure we do that. Item four, items to be removed, added or changed on this special agenda. I don't think there are any. Anybody else? Okay, moving to five. Ordinance 2025-018, amending title and Chapter Three of the Batavia Code, penalties for violation of sanitary sewerage system discharge code. And I'm gonna ask the city administrator to take over and tell us what's going on.
Thank you, Your Honor. As is our ordinary course of business, any ordinance change would come to the committee of the whole to be discussed and then would subsequently be recommended for approval to a city council meeting. But there sometimes exist some exigent circumstances that warrant bringing a matter before you on an expedited basis. And so that is why Ordinance 2025-018 is being brought before you today. The city's sanitary sewerage system code, most recent changes were implemented back in 1988. And back then, the penalties for violations for illicit discharge or for otherwise not complying with the regulations in that code were set at $200. The city recently experienced an incident where it was hit by a slug of chemicals to our publicly owned treatment facility. And we experienced $40,000 in damage just from that one incident alone. And so what Ordinance 2025-018 does is it increases the penalty provision to a penalty with a range from $1,000 and up to $20,000 per incident, but also expressly gives the city the right to recover for its costs against any party that would violate the sewerage code. Of course, this is being implemented prospectively. We are not allowed to take retrospective action, but I think that leaving the code in its current status leaves us vulnerable to not being able to assess penalties that are commensurate with the damages that have the potential to be caused. I would just note that the code provision itself, having not been updated since 1988, I think that I would recommend a wholesale review and revision of that. But as these circumstances did not give rise to a sufficient period of time to have that type of review and also review by council, we brought this one section to you on an expedited basis. And so we are recommending approval of Ordinance 2025-018. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do I take it we don't have any recourse to go after the violator on what just happened?
We will be pursuing them civilly.
Okay.
For the damages to our plant.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alderman Lancy?
Yeah, I'm obviously in favor for this, but I think obviously, yeah, we need to relook at it and just say, you know, because how broad is it? How narrow is it in terms of the different types of chemicals or whatever? Or how do we, from a language perspective, legally state that?
It's a great question. One of the things that has been under consideration for several years is business registration. A business registration program would help to identify the activities of all of the businesses within our municipality so that we could determine, you know, who is in, you know, danger of potentially violating this statute. As well, our current code provides for a permitting system for discharge as well, that I think following implementation of the business registration program, we would also look to implement that permitting as well, so that we would be able to better monitor these activities.
One of the things about business registration is it would collect information about businesses. And so we would know which businesses were handling chemicals and what they were handling, which would allow us to kind of, in a situation like this, there had to be some real sleuthing to discover where it was coming from. Unfortunately, the staff was able to track it. But if we knew what chemicals various companies were handling, we'd probably know where to go look in the future, so that can be helpful.
I appreciate Alderman Lancy asked the question because he's got the creek running right through his ward that some of this would travel on. So I think it's a good sign on your part that you're down here asking the questions. Anybody else?
Yeah, just a logistics question here. We're talking about a range of 1,000 to 20,000 feels appropriate. We want to make sure that there's enough of deterrence here and that we can sort of recoup any damages that occur. It sounds like the superintendent would be the one determining whether it's 1,000 or 20,000 or where it falls in there. Is that how we're?
That's correct. Our current superintendent comes from Fox Metro Water Reclamation District, and they had penalties of a similar level there.
Any other questions or comments, discussion? Does somebody then want to make a motion for the approval of Ordinance 2025-018?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Lancy. Any discussion?
I just have one more question. So does this current incident, is King County involved at all or the state of Illinois since?
We actually have involved the agencies overseeing illicit discharge at the county, state, and federal level with this incident. Thank you.
Do we have anybody in the audience that wants us to address this? Okay. Nothing further. I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll on Ordinance 2025-018.
Raza.
Hi.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peiper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Solfa.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley. Uwer. Serone. Vocal singer.
Aye.
That's 11.
Past 11, yes, no, knows, and three absent? Is that what?
Yes.
Okay. All right. The way this city council meeting works, this was the only official part of the city council tonight. We, the real city council, in its meetings, meet the first and third Mondays of every month in this room, 7 o'clock. Tonight, we had this special meeting, which preempted the committee meeting, which will be a much lengthier meeting. And that meeting, by city council regulation, is run by the mayor pro tem, who in our case, we're very fortunate to have Alderman Allen Wolf. And he will be coming up here and assuming the chair I'm in to take on the rest of the meeting once we have the vote to adjourn this one. So I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Raza.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Solfa.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uwer. Serone. Vocal singer.
Here.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. We knew this voice, right?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting's adjourned. The regular meeting's adjourned. The committee meeting, which is where the intense discussions will take place, is about to start.
Okay. Laura will come sit right here.
Committee of the whole place. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Raza.
Here.
Lancy. I'll be right back. Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Solfa.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uwer. Serone. Vocal singer.
Here.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. We knew this voice, right?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting's adjourned. The regular meeting's adjourned. The committee meeting, which is where the intense discussions will take place, is about to start.
Okay. Laura will come sit right here.
Committee of the whole place. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. First item on our agenda this evening is roll call.
Raza.
Here.
Lancy. I'll be right back. Beck.
Here.
Peiper.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Solfa.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Uwer. Serone. Vocal singer.
Here.
So that's 11.
And again, a reminder, if you come up to use the mic tonight, make sure that you can hear yourself in the background and make sure the little green light's on. Item number three is approval of minutes for February 25th, 2025. I have any comments or corrections or anything on those minutes? Not, can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Solfa, second by Ayazi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Then we have items to be removed, added or changed. Do we have anything for this evening?
No.
Okay. And then we'll move on to matters from the public for anything that's not on our agenda tonight. Is there anybody here for anything not on the agenda? Okay. We'll move on to item six is the consent agenda. Alderman Beck.
Consent agenda reads as follows. For approval, the Cow executive session minutes from February 11th, 2025 on personnel and the purchase of real estate. Resolution 2025-42-R, resolution approving the 2025 zoning map. Resolution 2025-35-R, approving a contract with Electric Conduit Construction Company to install electric conduits under the railroad track at Redant Road, Burlington Northern and Santa Fe Crossing for an amount not to exceed $355,025. Resolution 2025-45-R, authorizing payment for finance software maintenance. Resolution 2025-44-R, authorizing the execution of task order number 16, I'm sorry, with Alan Peppa Architects for professional engineering and architectural services for the fire station number two mechanical upgrades. Resolution 2025-43-R, authorizing execution of a one-year contract with Klaus Brothers, Inc. for the 2025 code enforcement abatement for lawn mowing. Resolution 2025-37-R, designating authority as banking agents. And, Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion by Beck, second by Solfa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Up next will be item seven, which is a discussion on the Peace Bridge bike ramp. I know everybody got the memo from Hart on the pictures. I know we've seen this before, talked about it before, and now it's going to become reality.
Thank you so much. Let me see whether I can. So this is the graphics that I shared with you yesterday. Just to go back in history, last year, around in September 2024, the city council approved Resolution 24123R to authorize V3 to proceed with the design of a bike ramp next to the Peace Bridge ramp that we have here. V3 and city staff worked last few months to go through some concept and ultimately decided on this concept, primarily because it probably saves the most land for future development on that parking lot just north of this ramp. And also, we have, since we finalized this concept, we have presented this to Park District because we need some easement from Park District. And they have authorized the city attorney and their council to work together to work on the easement documents. So at some point, we'll be probably bringing that back to you for approval. We have also presented this, or at least sent this by email to our environmental commission and also the bike commission for their support and any feedback they have. We have also shared this with Main Street because this project will have some impact on the summer activities that takes place on River Street. So the main thing that we are trying to do here is obviously install a bike ramp so that nobody has to get down from their bike and carry their bike up and down the staircase. That's what, you probably know this, if somebody wants to go along the east side of the river, they have to dismount their bike and carry it up and down the stairs. So, and also, we have some drainage that goes under one of the buildings here. So we want to reroute that and make sure that it's not under any commercial buildings out there. Those are the main purpose of this project. Currently, we have applied for IDNR permit and also working with Army Corps because the drainage pipe that you see here that will need their permit. So those permits have been submitted, and at some point, we are expecting to get those permits. Construction timeframe, we are hoping to get started in May of this year and get completed by December 2025. So pretty compact timeframe. This is all funded by Tiff Fund, so there is some timeline in there, too. The impact of the project, I want to just touch base on that a little bit because we have farmer's market on River Street, and this project is going to happen right at the heart of that time. So we are going to require the contractor to leave like a six to seven feet path on that existing ramp. What I mean by this is, this is the existing ramp. So leave a path more closer to the south side so that we have access for pedestrians and bikers all the time. I'll be very honest that there will be times when construction vehicles or something may impact that access. So we are going to have a detour route posted all the time. So if anybody doesn't feel comfortable, go around the construction activities, they have a detour route, which is one of the pages that I sent to you. So we'll post a detour route for everyone. So it's going to be up all the time so that if anything happens, there is a detour route up there. We, as I said, we have shared this with Main Street so that they can plan their farmer's market, you know, the impact where they cannot have any tent and all that. So we have been, that coordination is still ongoing. And we'll ask the contractor to actually, if he's not working on Saturday or Sunday, that he needs to tighten up his work zone and make sure that that six, seven feet that I talked about, that they leave that open for residents and bikers and pedestrians over the weekend. So with that, I'm going to actually request V3 consultants, we have Kurt and Lauren here to talk about the plans more in details, and then you guys can ask questions, feedback.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. I'm Kirk Corrigan with V3 Companies, and with me tonight is Lauren Montero with V3. She's the project manager of the company. It's great to be back at Batavia. I was very involved with the River Street job, so it's great to be back and try to finish this off with some of the storm sewer improvements here. But I'm going to let Lauren kind of take over and run through a few of the renderings. And if there's any actual details on the grading plans and whatnot, we have those with us to answer those questions as well. So.
Yeah, so as Rahat mentioned, you know, the goal of this project really is to improve the connectivity between the Riverfront Trail and Peace Bridge for pedestrians and bicyclists. So, you know, these renderings kind of show how we envision that happening. And, you know, obviously, first and foremost is this ramp. And it's intended to be an ADA compliant ramp. The cross slopes, you know, will meet the ADA requirements. We're really keeping the running slopes as minimal as we could, but recognizing that we had to get down pretty low. So they'll be 5% and under, and that's really so that it's a comfortable path for both pedestrians to maneuver, but also for bicyclists to be able to navigate without dismounting their bikes. You know, they may need to slow down, but the goal is for them to be able to get from point A to point B without having to carry their bikes up and down the stairs. So as you can kind of see in this second rendering here, in order to accommodate the grade change from sort of the sidewalk level at River Street down to the trail elevation and to do so with ADA compliant slopes, it means that that, sort of the inside wall, sort of on the eastern River Street edge, is going to end up being eight to 10 feet high. But we look at this as a really great opportunity for the city to display some, you know, really cool public art. So in this rendering here, you know, we've splashed something on the wall so you can kind of envision it, but it could be a real, like, showcase wall and a nice feature of this ramp. On the exterior, we're envisioning some sort of stone form liner that would, you know, really match sort of the aesthetic of other things that you guys have going on in the city. So conversely, if I go back to this one, you can see from the parking lot, though, that wall will really only be, you know, 20 inches to 24 inches high if you're standing in the parking lot looking south, with a railing on top, of course, because we don't want any cars going from the parking lot onto the ramp. So the width of the ramp is going to vary from about 10 to 14 feet. And I'll start here, this upper portion of the ramp, we're really, that's going to be 10 feet wide, and that's really to kind of match what's happening in existing conditions. Sort of the existing ramp down, we're going to replace the sort of existing short retaining wall. But where this is to where the existing outer wall of the stairs is currently is about 10 feet. So we're trying to match existing conditions there. It was really important to us to try to save that outer wall of the stairs and sort of incorporate it into our ramp instead of having to, you know, make more, you know, structure and take up more space. So that's what this design is doing here. So we sort of kept this upper portion of the ramp to 10 feet wide, where the lower portion of the ramp, we bumped it out a little bit more to about 14 feet wide. And that was really to sort of allow for this switchback, which, let me see if I can get a better, hmm, at the switchback from the upper to the lower portion, it just allows for a wider turning radius for bikers to be able to maneuver and with pedestrian traffic. So it was really just to kind of accommodate that. As Rahat mentioned, you know, one of the things that we really considered as we were laying this out was any impact to this north parking lot, knowing that the intention is for the temporary parking lot to eventually be developed. You know, we came up with this layout because it really consolidated the footprint and, you know, reduced the impact and, you know, reduced the, you know, taking that developable land from a potential future development. So that was really important with this layout. You can also see here that the railing that's being proposed along the ramp is meant to match the existing conditions, the existing railing that's on the stairway and then again on the trail. So the idea is for this ramp to sort of seamlessly blend into the existing conditions there and just, you know, kind of be nice and cohesive. As Rahat mentioned, another purpose of the project is to relocate the existing storm sewer outfall that currently runs below the Pal Joey's building on River Street. You know, it picks up in River Street, it goes under the building and discharges to the river. And so we really just want to get that storm out from underneath the building. So as part of the 2012 River Street Improvement Project, which Kirk happened to work on, there was a manhole that was left kind of on the existing ramp right around here with this future connection in mind. So as part of this project, we plan on connecting to that manhole. The new storm will cross perpendicularly kind of this way underneath the ramp and then run parallel to the ramp down the bank and then discharge, as you see it here, on the river. So. Oh, yes, the night view, of course. Thank you. One thing to note, too, is the existing stairs. We intend on keeping those existing stairs and not touching those, leaving them as they are and really just building this ramp kind of around it. And then, so, let me just pan through these renderings. And then this last rendering here shows the intention of putting lighting along this. So we envision lighting on either side of the ramp. It would be like a flush mount, you know, like knee-high, maybe like 30 inches high, I think, is what we were thinking, just enough to kind of illuminate the paths for safety and so you can navigate it at night, but, you know, not something that you're going to, you know, see from down the street, so.
Dustin?
Regarding the lighting, would there be any interest in maybe some more lighting down? Just because, obviously, it's a rendering, so it's hard to tell from this, but it does look a little dim, which, you know, I think some folks might have some personal safety.
Yeah, I mean, I think the intention is to, you know, keep it flush, number one. So, you know, if you're on your bike, your elbows aren't going to hit anything that's protruding. But also kind of keep it so that the ramp itself is well-lit enough, like meets, you know, those requirements for a footpath kind of a thing, but without being so lit that you're seeing, you know, that it's like a light pollution type of a situation. So really keeping it just for the ramp itself.
Okay. I was just going to mention also that there's, we have a photometric plan, which basically shows the contours of the lighting. And so I think the rendering, excuse me, is really just kind of not reflecting that exactly. So the photometric, if we had maybe a true lighting simulation, it would be much brighter.
Yeah, Dustin, I don't know how many times you've been down there at night with the lights. The lights from the parking lot light up the whole place.
Fair point.
So that's obviously not being shown in these shadows on this side here. So there would be more light on that than just what's represented here.
Fair point, yeah. All right.
Anybody else have questions, Kevin?
Yeah, just, as I'm watching this rendering, I'm thinking of my kids on their bikes. I see a big ramp going straight to the river, right?
it blank slate might be a little, you know.
I can respond to that. Actually, Lori Boderman has brought this to the Public Arts Commission as a future project.
We're already talking about it.
Yeah.
I think they're already aware of this because I have a house guest that happens to work for.
One more thing, and Chief's not here tonight, I don't think, but, you know, the surveillance mine pops out and me and, you know, also dependent on lighting, I do agree, I think there's plenty of lighting, but, you know, it's just an area where you're kind of tucked away and leads to nefariousness, wanting to make sure we have, you know, that properly covered just from an eyeballs perspective.
Anybody else? I have one question. I know about this up in the past about the actual level of the walkway that's alongside the river. Don't know exactly the dates or anything of how often it is underwater. We do have a gate at the south end. What will we plan on doing at this access to it if it's flooded and how do we stop people from trying to go through it? I don't know if we've come up with an answer or thought about that yet, but the reality is if we don't raise that deck along the riverbank, it's going to flood at some point. We know that.
Would it depend what we do at the dam?
No, that has no effect on it.
Oh, okay.
It has no effect on it. The only thing that would have an effect on it is North Aurora, but it doesn't come this far north.
So I think until the grading is changed on the area that floods, that it would be closed in a similar manner. So there's no reason really to come down these ramps if that area of the path is flooded.
I don't remember how we did it at the staircase before. Is there a gate down at the?
The park district.
Has it down there? Okay. And that's all I want to do is make sure that we're thinking about that so that this doesn't become, you know, a dead end into the water, you know, when it floods and that we're ready to handle that however we have to handle it. Because it doesn't happen as often as it used to, but it's still going to happen. So as long as we know how we're going to handle it or in park districts, okay with that, that's fine. Other than that, I think it's a great idea and yes, I think the public art part of it has to be talked about a lot so that way people don't just go, wow, there's a big giant gray wall there.
And it's not just a bike ramp, it's also a stroller ramp. Downstairs all the time.
If I could, that was one of the most important aspects of this project is that here we have this path along the east side of the river, but if you are in a wheelchair or if you are pushing a stroller or if you are pulling a burly, those stairs don't just present a challenge, they're an impediment to you even using that section. So this will address that.
Alan, you bring up a great point with that path flooding over time. Does this take into consideration and part of the planning, when we decide to fix that, are we going to have to redo what we're just doing?
The only way I thought that was explained to us that we could fix that was because it would be crazy to try to go in and take out what's there, is just to add to the deck. Basically, you're going to build another concrete sidewalk up above it. And that would really be the only way you'd be able to do it and it's not going to be cheap.
But could that, how would that match with these improvements? I guess that's what I'm, the question I'm bringing up.
It may change the grade down at the bottom or?
Yeah, they're not going to let you do that nowadays. That wouldn't even be allowed nowadays. I'm not sure, oh, Stahlstrom got it installed back when he did it. That's in the floodway, so they're not going to let you fill on top of that in order to...
Right, but it's not actually affecting the river because it's cantilevered or posted up above the river.
Right, but if you put, if you want to raise it above the water grade and you're filling to do that or putting something on top of something else to do that, that would be considered, that you're not allowed to do.
How are they going to let us do this then? Because you're extending this further from where it is now and adding into the river.
I'll let the engineers speak to that, but yeah, that is a part of the permitting process.
The permit went in today, so we are matching that existing grade. Yes, there's going to be some wall, but that's going to be part of, it's part of the design, it's part of the permit. So you have to be determined exactly on the comments that they're going to have on that. Our drainage people didn't see a real problem with it between that and the outfall, the ramp and the outfall. I mean, they were very confident to be on the less stringent of the permits, the Army Corps and the DNR. So, I mean, again, I say that today, come back here in a couple of months, it could be a different answer, you know, which is some of the agencies, you never know.
And the bigger the crush rock, you can leave it the edge of the river for the bass, the better. Okay, so no other questions? Let us know when we got a permit and we can start talking about it being done.
There may be others in the audience.
Does anybody in the audience want to address us on this?
Doug Eldredkamp, live in Ward 4. I welcome this as I, my wife and I ride bikes quite frequently. I think it's a beautiful project. One question I do have is will there be additional bike parking for the bikes that come downtown, maybe adjacent to the parking lot where we could lock bikes and go to the restaurants? That's my question. Other than that, it's beautiful, can't wait till it's done.
Great idea.
And do we, I think we have one bike rack or two on the?
We do, up at the corner of that ramp, we have both a bike rack and then we have a few of the, I think, three or four of the circles, but, you know...
With those coming out as part of this project, we're going to have to reevaluate bike parking to make sure they get replaced and if we need more.
Okay. So one of the things we are looking at is relocate those circle that Laura talked about. You know, there's a concrete pad, there's a bench, there are a couple of flower pots there, so there is an opportunity, we are going to probably move those a little bit farther north, so.
And there's another project that will be occurring across the street from there for the public restrooms, and there's landscaping associated with that, so that might be an area in which we can accommodate that.
Bike racks over there as well. Okay.
Yeah, I do have to agree during the summer, when a lot of people ride bikes down, it is challenging for people to find places to lock up their bikes.
Any other questions or comments? If not, look forward to construction. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, then we'll move on to item eight, which is ordinance 2516, amendment to the official zoning map for multiple properties at 505, 615, 621, 705, 723, 741, 749, 757, and 801 Pine Street and 937 South Red Ant Road.
Okay. So I'm here tonight for the rezoning of 11, to have the, can you me the whole, consider the zoning map amendment for 11 properties and a portion of right-of-way located along Pine Street and one property on South Red Ant Road. All these properties were annexed over the last decade into the city. They were consistent with our process of annexing donut holes into the town from unincorporated Kane County. When we annex properties into the town, they are located into our base zoning district, which is R0, single-family residential. At this time, we are coming back and looking to rezone these to the appropriate zoning district, which staff has determined would be R1L, single-family, low-density. Every, all 11 properties are entirely surrounded by the R1L, single-family district. So this would be consistent with the surrounding properties and how those properties have been developed and you currently use, there's no development proposed on any of these properties at this time or redevelopment, so this is simply just routine cleanup by staff.
Any questions or comments?
This might be my own ignorance. I'm looking at 615 and 621, the little red box doesn't go all the way back to the lot. Is that intentional or because of what's going on?
So portions of those properties were actually located in the city previously and they were already rezoned, so while it's common ownership, there was a split zoning designation on the property.
Are any potential negatives for the homeowners that are there currently? I mean, any pitfalls we can think of?
So typically when it comes to rezoning, single-family properties, R0, single-family district actually has the largest setback requirements for homes. So by going to the R1L, our low-density district, setbacks actually slightly decrease. So there's, in staff's opinion, there's only a net gain for these residents. So if they were to come with a shed, you know, it could be, you know, four, I think, probably four feet closer to the property lines, you know, in a standard interior lot than it would be in the R0. So it's better setbacks for how their lots are designed.
Fantastic. Any other questions? Not? Can I get a motion to recommend to council ordinance 2516? Motion by Lansey, second by Malay. All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Up next is item nine, which is resolution 2536R, preliminary and final plat of subdivision approval for Hemming subdivision, North Avenue, 403 North Avenue and 420 Maple Lane. Travis Hemming, applicant.
Thanks, Alderman. I'll also be talking about item 10 on the agenda or nine and 10 together, so they're both related. Essentially, the ordinance that's before you tonight is a plat of vacation, so when staff was reviewing this proposed one-lot subdivision with the applicant, Mr. Hemming, as well as his adjoining owner or neighbor and property owner, Mr. Skia, they are, Mr. Hemming is looking to basically do a lot split of his existing rear of his property. He would incorporate some of his adjoining neighbor that lives on Maple Lane with the proposed subdivision to create a development lot. And as part of, when we were reviewing this, there is some excess Maple Lane right-of-way that would be part of ordinance 2517. So essentially that ordinance helps facilitate the proposed plat of subdivision. Essentially, that is excess right-of-way that we worked with the utilities and public works to make sure that that could be vacated. So that is what ordinance 25017 addresses. With the resolution 25036, this is, like I said, a proposed one-lot subdivision. It's kind of assembling those properties together to create a future development lot. In our conversations with Mr. Hemming, he has not indicated plans to immediately develop the property, but he wanted to kind of create the lot for future potential development of the site. There were a few conditions through the planning commission recommendation that do address basically some conditions of some items to be added to the plat, some are more minor language changes that staff were seeking. But then there was a few that just kind of addressed future development, knowing that there might not be immediate plans for development. One would be to indicate on the plat itself that sidewalk would be, expected to be installed with development. That's per our subdivision code and the council's goal of seeing sidewalks ultimately on both sides of all streets, even in locations where there may not be obvious continuity immediately. So that's where those recommendations are on there. We also had a note about the tree preservation ordinance that we did adopt last year, just noting for future development that that would be applicable to this newly created lot. So with ordinance 2517, we do need three-quarters of approval on that or particular item, so that might, would need to make sure with the council that that's done. But overall, the planning commission was in favor of the proposed change or proposed subdivision as well. They did not speak to the vacation because it's outside the purview, it's just the council's review, but they did feel that the proposed subdivision was appropriate and did recommend approval as outlined in the ordinance and resolution.
Anybody have any questions? Any comments on it? I had to go drive by it because I couldn't remember that there was enough width of for a lot on that side on Maple Lane. Okay. Then do I have a motion for, the first one, which is resolution 25-36R, preliminary and final plat of subdivision approval for Hemming subdivision? Motion by Yazzy, second by Malay. All in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. And then the second one would be ordinance 2517, which is approving plat of vacation for that portion of Maple Lane. Motion by Yazzy, second by Malay. All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Okay, that will go, and those have to be on the regular agenda. The second one has to...
Because the ordinance facilitates that, it would be on the, both would be on the regular agenda.
Okay.
Question, Alan? Will my kids still be able to cut through your yard to get to Maple Lane after this?
We'll move on to item 11, which is resolution 2540-R, authorizing execution of task order number 52 with Engineering Enterprises for Construction Engineering Services of the Year Three Lead Service Line Replacement Project.
As you all know, we're currently in year two for the lead water service replacement project. That project's under construction right now. Jeremy Barki has just continued to work to get lead water services replaced and to secure funding through the state of Illinois, through low-interest loan funds. This is year three and we are to the point where we have let the project forbid, we have received bids, we're finalizing the loan process right now, and as one of the steps to finalize the loan process will be the next item on the agenda. But also in parallel or conjunction with that is this resolution 040, which would be execution of the task order for Construction Engineering Services. This is with EEI. They've been helping us really from the beginning on this project and we've had excellent communications with them. So we are recommending move forward. Again, the loan itself will be 0% for 30 years and this part of the project, $598,724 for construction engineering, would be fully funded and put in as part of that loan. So we are recommending resolution 040.
Questions, comments? I'll just restate again, I think that this is just an amazing thing that our water department has been able to make happen. Realistically, I think will probably be the first one in Illinois to be done with our municipality in replacement of these. So I think it's, you know, just a model plan that I hope everybody else somehow figures a way to be able to take advantage of that and get that done because it is something that I think we all are aware of that has to be done. So the sooner we get it done, the better, and I'm really, really proud of the department and all of our public works that that program, as big as it is, has gone off with little to no complaints. And anything that has been a complaint gets rectified immediately. So, you know, from a lot of people that have had it done, you know, just how quickly, how easily the process has gone. So we need to learn from that, too, and use that in other things that we do.
We often cite Jeremy's efforts, but what you just mentioned, Alderman, speaks to the field crews. So all of our, all of our operators who are out there working in people's homes and coordinating with the residents.
And making sure that the contractors do exactly what they're supposed to do when they're there and making sure that it all happens seamlessly. Then I'll look for a motion for approval of resolution 25, 202540R, authorizing execution of task order number 52 with Engineering Enterprises for Construction Engineering Services of the Year Three Lead Service Line Replacement Project. Motion by Malay, second by Malone. All those in favor? Aye. Closed. Motion carries. And then we'll move on to item 12, which is resolution 2025, there's a typo I just caught, 202541R, authorizing execution of notice to award the Year Three Contract Lead and Galvanized Steel Water Service Line Replacement Project to Miller Pipeline LLC.
This is kind of that interim step that's required as part of the EPA loan funding process. This is a notice of intent to award, not the actual notice of award. The actual notice of award will come back to a future date once the loan is fully executed, but we have to do the notice of intent of award in order for them to finalize the loan process. So it's just an extra step. This is for the Year Three program, potentially a loan amount up to the full $7 million. This would be, as I said just a few moments ago, 0% interest for 30 years. And Jeremy has spoken with you before... And Jeremy has spoken with you before about a census tract. There's a census tract in the city that actually has the potential to qualify for principal forgiveness, which would be a loan that would be fully funded by the state on a reimbursement basis. We are still pursuing that, and if that comes to fruition, some of the work in year three will be pulled out, and then will be done under that year four principal forgiveness loan. But we don't know that yet, so we're putting it all in year three, and in the future, we may be pulling it back out, some of it. So I just wanted to make you aware of that full picture. But right now, we're recommending Resolution 041, which would be the execution of the notice of intent to award to Miller Pipeline LLC for an amount of $4,553,011.24.
Abby?
This is another new one, so this will be the third construction company for them?
The third construction company, yep.
Have you found any laps of momentum or anything with the switching each time?
Well, there's, there is certainly a, you know, a new learning curve that you have to go through with every contractor, but as part of the EPA process, we have to go through this bidding process, and you don't, you can't just go back to the same contractor you've had good luck with. They don't allow that, so, yep.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't know other comments or questions. Then I look for a motion to recommend to council Resolution 25041, authorizing execution of notice of intent to award the year three lead and galvanized steel water replacement service project to Miller Pipeline LLC. So move.
Okay.
Motion by Malley, second by Beck. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Gary. And now we will. Discussion, Illinois House Bill 5021, Municipal and Cooperative Electric Utility Planning and Transparency Act.
Thank you. I will start with the House bill number, because that was the House bill number from the 103rd Congress, and now that this is actually progressing through the process, it will have a new House bill number of 2901. So in the future, you'll see House Bill 2901, and it's, it's the same bill. The language is identical, but it has a new number for the 104th Congress. General Assembly, I shouldn't call it Congress. Anyways, as I indicated in my memo, I gave you a memo on March 6th, last Thursday, and the process is still in the redline stages with negotiations ongoing. And as I indicated, you know, there was scheduled to be an updated meeting last Friday. That meeting did not occur, and I sent out an email to the city council earlier today to make you aware that March 4th, or, sorry, March 10th was the update meeting, so that was just yesterday, where the two sides got together again to further negotiations. And I, in my email to you, I gave you the attendance of who was in attendance at that meeting, as well as kind of a status update on many of these items, and that's what I'll kind of go through tonight, from both my original memo and then email from today. So, starting with section 15, and really sections 21 as well, of the, of the proposed legislation, that has to do with the requirement for an integrated resource plan, as well as the submittal requirements for that plan. Right now, the draft language is that the plan would have to be submitted to the Illinois Power Agency, and that is something that the Sierra Club remains steadfast on in their desire to have the IPA oversee the stakeholder process, as opposed to having it at the local utility level. That item remains unresolved, and again, I think both sides are opposed on, on that issue. I will point out that, you know, over the last six months, and Alderman, you're not here tonight, but he would certainly be passionate about the fact that you've had discussions on video gaming, and you did not have to bring those discussions to the state gaming board. You've had discussions on liquor control or liquor licenses, and you didn't need to bring those to the control commission. Just two or three weeks ago, we talked about CBD. That did not have to go to the Department of Agriculture, and I think it was last week we talked about towing, which did not have to go to the Commerce Commission. But authors and proponents of this legislation feel that you need to bring decisions for the electric utility to the Illinois Power Agency. And that, that's where staff comes in and really recommends that we oppose anything that takes away your local control of, of our utility. We are the ones who know what's best for Batavia, not someone, you know, from downstate who doesn't have connections to this community. The way the current language reads for section 21, which is, or section 25, sorry, which is the submittal, it says, "Each utility shall submit its IRP, preliminary IRP, to the agency," meaning the Illinois Power Agency. Then it says, "The agency may request further information from the utility, and any such requests shall be in writing, and the agency requests, if the agency requests additional information, utility shall provide responses no later than 15 days following the request." So it's clear that the Illinois Power Agency is administering a public comment process, but this language also makes it clear that the agency is going to perform at least some level of review. Why would they ask for additional information if they weren't going to be looking at the document? So at some level, they're going to be doing a review of the document, which, again, I say to city council, you know, "Do you think that you need to have the Illinois Power Agency reviewing your document for the city of Batavia?" The next item was that dual IRP requirement. Right now, that language remains unresolved. It's still in the redline stages. That is the conflict that exists because, right, as, as was proposed last year and as was in the first drafts, both NMPA and the member communities would have to file an IRP. And when NMPA was established back in the early 2000s, the member communities felt that it was important to keep planning at the local level and not at the agency level. So the agency has never done planning for, on behalf of the members. The agency is strictly a project agency whose only project is Prairie State. So the requirement, a new state law that would require NMPA to do a plan for its member communities, number one, something the agency's never done, and number two, it would be a cost for the member communities to not only have to pay NMPA to do a study, but also for us to have our, do our own study. So we've been trying to work through that language, and again, that is still being circulated and still in negotiations with the hope being that we don't have to pay for two separate IRPs here at Batavia. The next item is language in the legislation that would say, "We were required to follow certain actions consistent with the Public Utilities Act." So the Public Utilities Act, even though we're a municipal public agency and we run a utility, we're actually not governed under the Public Utilities Act. Public Utilities Act governs ComEd and Ameren in the state of Illinois, so the big IOUs. Those big IOUs having thousands of customers and literally thousands of staff members. We're still working through, and I know that that was a, a point in yesterday's meeting that we asked for additional time in order to further review this, because some of the requirements within the Public Utilities Act may be onerous for a utility such as us. That is still kind of in the research stage of trying to get at exactly what would be required for us. The next item is access to the computer models. As you know, we, we, the city of Batavia have hired Brattle to perform a resource plan for us. Those of you in the private sector can recognize that you have proprietary models. It's not uncommon for consultants to have their own proprietary model. Those models generally aren't for public distribution. They're, they're intel, are their IP, their, their intellectual property that belongs to that company. And this is one that the Sierra Club remains steadfast on also, was that they want the computer models to be submitted to the Illinois Power Agency as part of the overall process. So again, I think that that's something that city council should oppose, if nothing else on the grounds of, you know, protecting a private company who we hire their model and their proprietary information. Number five, the item, the next item on the list here, this one is really more, I don't know if it's clerical, in that the language says, as currently proposed, "Identify all programs, grants, loans, tax benefits that the utility might be eligible for under the Inflation Reduction Act." And really, the objection is just to that word "all," because the Inflation Reduction Act is, is, you know, that thick, and so someone would need to become familiar with that act to the point where we have to identify all programs and grants that we could be eligible for, as opposed to a level of reasonableness with respect to that. So that's all that that is. I would hope that someone could, could come to a compromise on that to realize that, that one word makes all the difference. The next item is currently proposed. We would have to issue a formal request for proposals during the IRP process. So while we have Brattle working for us to develop various scenarios for portfolios, as currently proposed by the legislation, we would have to go out to energy companies to get formal proposals for costs in order to use that data for the IRP process. That's typically not what's done. Typically, you hire a consultant who has market expertise and who can use their market expertise to, to guide you as you develop your IRP as to various cost proposals. So the actual process of going out for a proposal, especially when you not, would not be executing on those proposals, that, that, that is one thing that we're opposed to. And I think there's just one more here. That has to do with the Open Meetings Act, which, as I indicated, that really in the last paragraph of my, and it's not anything I haven't indicated to council before, there's only a couple of items that are explicitly under the transparency heading in this proposed legislation. One of them is the Open Meetings Act, and the other is an entire section related to co-ops, which isn't applicable to Batavia. The Open Meetings Act language is, again, still, still in draft form. The item was not discussed yesterday, but all parties agree that it did need to be discussed at a future meeting. As it was currently drafted, based on what we, what we were reviewing, the language would be fine, because it kept in the language that currently exists in the Open Meetings Act, but just added more language. But what was really confusing as to how it was formatted, we didn't know if it was an error or not. So that's one we're definitely going to keep an eye on. I think our understanding is that they want, they, the supporters of the legislation want to maintain what's, and I'm speaking, speaking for them, they can come up and speak for themselves, but I think what the thing is, when you're doing negotiations, like in the context of the IMEA, they want those negotiations to be done in open session, as opposed to kind of what, what the rest of the bill allows for. So if we were to go out for a five-by-16 energy contract, we wouldn't have to do that all in the open session. That's a competitive, competitive and confidential process. So I think they want to maintain that confidentiality, but at the same time, allow for open with respect to specifically the IMEA's renewal process. So with that, I can, I can stop. Again, I referenced my email to you from today and my memo that I just went through, and that's the latest. Why was this brought tonight? I know that question was raised. Frankly, it's in the draft stage. Now is the time for you to reach out to your local legislators and say, "Hey, you know, we're, we're opposed to this. We realize it's in draft, but we're not going to be, you know, supportive of this if this is the final version of it." Now is exactly the time to do that. Waiting until the language is all finalized and on the floor is not a time to ask for changes in legislation, so.
Real quick, before we bring anybody else up, have we found out, or do we know what the other cities within NMPA are talking about, doing about, anything like we are?
With respect to?
With respect to this bill, or with respect to our own, you know, resource planning that we're doing? Are they doing that as well?
One thing that's very clear over the years is that Geneva and Rochelle and Batavia are three distinct communities. We, we all, we all are different, uniquely different. Will they have to do integrated resource planning? If this bill passes, they certainly will. We're out, we're out doing it already. Geneva did a, I'll say, an abbreviated resource plan just a couple of years ago. They did not do a fully comprehensive plan, and I'm not, I'm not sure where Rochelle is, if Rochelle's even to the point of doing that yet.
Because I think that, you know, one of the things that I've taken from this and that I want to make sure that people are aware of and that we do, is that we try to keep this out in the open as much as possible. And the only things that we try to discuss in closed session are any litigation, any contracts themselves on, you know, price of what we're purchasing or anything like that, but the rest of it stays out in open session in that we talk about it and we publicize it. And I think that if we could get the people that are trying to write a law for this to do that and allow us to do it that way, even if we have to submit and make an extra step to submit whatever plan we come up with for public comment, because they can't come down here and do it, I think we, we might have to accept that, and that might be the way we get the things we want into that bill. So when we talk to our legislators, I think that's something that we have to make sure that we communicate, that we definitely want to be open about this process and every step of it, so that way there is, you know, that, you know, has to be part of our plan for doing this. It can't just be, "We're going to do this regardless of what the state says," and then not talk about it or not have it in open session.
Can I just point out that as part of the discussions about bringing Brattle on board, we made it clear that public comments and public input into the process were going to be part of that. I think part of the concern about the IPA public comment is, what public? Is it people who aren't from Batavia who are going to be commenting on our IRP? So, you know, you'd like to keep the public control.
Somebody from the industry that wants to be part of that, you know, whether you want to say it's the solution, or they want a part of the pie that's out there that's going to get divvied up, they want to be part of it. I don't have as much problem as that is I have that somebody else's comment from whatever we turn into the IPA forces us to make a decision. I think we still have to remain, the fact that we are a public electric utility, and those decisions get made here. Abby?
Can I ask or seek clarification? The way I read section 2025 is that we would be required to go through the Brattle process as we're kind of doing it. We submit our plan up for public comment. They have the potential to also do stakeholder outreach, but we are still required to handle that all in-house ourselves, put it out there for public comment process.
We only do a stakeholder meeting before we submit to the IPA. Then, once it's submitted to the IPA, they're responsible for two rounds of stakeholder meetings as well. That's the 15 and 45 day. It's administered through them.
Okay, so I, I like this for three reasons. The first one is having some external oversight may have prevented us from getting into the Prairie State situation that we're in right now. Second, some communities don't have the same resources that we have to do the process that we've invested in with Brattle Group already, and I think it is a very important process to do that kind of engagement and that kind of review, because it does matter to us what people in Peoria are doing. It should matter to the people of Peoria what we're doing with our energy contracts. That's why a lot of this legislation is bubbling up, because we are impacting not only our residents locally, but statewide, globally, as we're trying to combat climate change, these energy contracts matter. We should care. We should expect the rest of the state to care, and I, and I also didn't read it to say that whatever comments we receive are binding, and that if somebody in Peoria has a great idea, we're not required to go and do anything about it, but we are required to have that as part of our process.
Right, they're not binding. It's just chipping away at the process. I mean, again, you did not have to bring the video gaming discussion to the state.
Video gaming does not create global climate change that we're also debating. Those are not, I mean, there are some public health, sure, there are some public health that maybe could be handled better at the state level. We have those discussions all the time. This is one that I think some consistency and some oversight is going to be better for the residents.
Yeah, I'll just make comment that although there might be some good intentions here and good ideas, if there's anything our state has and good ideas, if there's anything our state has proven, they cannot be trusted with much. Whether that's our money, whether that's our decisions, whatever, we don't make very good decisions up the chain. And, you know, that's partially a personal opinion, but there's some facts that back that up as well. So if we don't have to, I don't want anybody, you know, and I think we do a pretty darn good job here. Now, you know, oversight's one thing, but I could see this being a very slippery slope for the state of Illinois. And, yeah, I just want to go on record absolutely opposing giving them any information.
You know, Abby brings up some great points and, you know, I'm the type of person that does at some times really like consistency over the, over things. But I'm not, I keep going back and forth on this bill of what the best item is, and there's so many items that you have read through, you know, that is part of this bill. I think one thing that we did that really stands out is when CEGIA was there, as a group, we all decided we can't hit every part of this thing. But we sat and we talked about what was really important to us within our group and that instead of hitting our representatives with language of saying, I hate this, I hate this, I hate this, you know, we really pinpointed some things that were really, really important to us to be able to have, you know, that we had that control over. And then, you know, we said, here's some things that, you know, we're willing to, you know, we accept, we like and everything like that. You know, I don't want us to be able to have our control over our utility taken away from us and whatever that means of what we have to do to work with the language. Some of these other things, I think these are negotiable, but I think that as we move along, instead of like pinpointing this, maybe what we need to do is talk about what is it that really, really matters to us and really discuss that. And how is that language? How are we going to get that language or work with our legislators on forming this?
Yeah.
Gary, I understand your point that, you know, we don't have, we didn't have direct oversight when we decided on a towing contract or video gaming, although we do have legislation about video gaming and then we have to work within that or cannabis. I view this more along the lines of how our fire department works or our health department works with local businesses or even how we just talked about what happened to our wastewater treatment. We have oversight to prevent certain things from happening on a larger scale that impacts other people, impacts us, impacts other people. I'm assuming that as we've done this big project on our water, our wastewater treatment plant, that there was state oversight on that project. As we're talking about what's happening with the dam and the river, there are, we don't just get to make decisions. Like, there are state and federal things that we need to follow, guidelines because of the large impacts. A towing contract does not have large impact. This has large impact. And so I understand that we want to make all of our own decisions, but we don't get to do that on a lot of things within the city. Just like me who has a business, I don't get to make a lot of decisions directly that impacts my business. I have to follow health department, I have to follow the fire code, I have to do all these things to make it a better, safer place. And so I, this does not scare me, a lot of this. I view it as it trying to help us and trying to help the state as a whole. And I don't think they're coming directly at Batavia with this legislation, even though some of it feels personal. I think it's a broader, it's much broader than that.
I agree. I wrote my notes that the energy differs greatly from gaming and towing because it has an impact. We're all in this together, and I think that this comes from a place of trying to ensure, you know, provide a path for consistency and ensure that we have a healthy future as a state and country and everything that we're part of. So it doesn't scare me and it is in the development process. So I am in favor of what Jen kind of suggested. Let's pick out the things that we can really get behind and things that can, that we can work with. The oversight is not as scary to me because I want that for, I want there to be some standard that everybody is following and that I know everybody is following. I do very much understand.
That's the CEGIA legislation that we're all following.
And real quick, Gary, how many municipalities does this affect? Does this law affect?
About 42 or 45.
Okay, so out of the hundreds that are in the state, it's a small portion of that. So, you know, I think we have to, again, going back to CEGIA and other things we've done, we do need to identify the things that we could live with that's in there and the things that we definitely need to oppose, you know, to try to retain as much control as we can. I think that's, to me, where I think we're at with this, and we really do need to make those contacts. Chris?
Here's the problem, though. I don't disagree with what you just said, don't disagree with what Alderman Baron said. That's not the way this works. This, the House bill is going to go in as an entirety. So let's say you don't like Section 15, you don't like Section 24, you don't like Section 25. You know what? We don't have a full agreement on what we don't like, but you know what we do? We have an agreement that we don't like portions of that bill. So you have to oppose the bill. It's just like if you are on a jury. All right, you think that he was negligent, you think that wasn't the proximate cause of the injury, you don't think he's injured. You know what? You might think all of you don't agree, so we can't decide not guilty. In reality, you have all agreed. You've agreed that you don't like something, so you have to find not guilty. It's the same thing with an entirety of a bill. I don't have a problem sending a nice letter, forceful directive, saying, this is what we dramatically oppose, this is what we need to change. But in the interim, until these are met, we must oppose House Bill 5021 as drafted because you can't, it's going to be either pass in its entirety or it's not going to pass in its entirety.
Well, I think that's why we're trying to get involved in this now is because this is, while it's still in the, you know, red line, in the different versions that are out there, and people are still going back and forth about what's actually in there and what they will actually be able to vote yes or no on when it comes up for a vote in committee to get, you know, move further in the legislature.
I believe that if we are going to be sending anything along in terms of what our thoughts are, it needs to start out, we oppose this bill as drafted and we will not, and we will, we do not support it. However, if certain changes are made to whatever section we decide to do, just like we did it before, we can say, you know, bring that back to us. But as drafted now, we are in opposition to this bill, just straight. It's got to be straight and straightforward, not wishy-washy. You got to be straightforward at the beginning, then set forth some reasoning, some ways that things can be amended, things in that regard, and then conclude it by, however, as drafted, we are in full opposition to this bill.
Yeah, I just had a question for you, Gary, in terms of, do we know exactly what data is being collected, what the end game is, what potential regulations would be put in play? Because that's all I see. I see, we want to get data, what's everybody doing, and then what are they going to do with that data?
So all of Section 15 deals with, and there's like Section 15A through like J, I can't remember even the letters anymore.
Was it all in there? I can go back and read it all.
Yeah, there's all the data that they're collecting, and there's a whole slew of different items that they're looking for. And that was forwarded, just so everybody's aware and so the members of the public are aware, the draft version at least has been forwarded to Brattle even before we started the Brattle process so that they knew what the draft language was saying so that they could be, they're doing their planning accordingly.
And one thing I want to do too is, because Susan contacted me earlier today, emailed me that she wanted to come up because she's one of the people that's been in the room while they're doing this, while they're preparing this, and while they talk about what they're going to want, what they don't want in this bill. So if you want to come up now, Susan, and give us the information that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. I got to get this lower. Is there? This can't be moved, right? There you go. I'm going over here. I still can't see you, Tony.
I can hear you.
Thank you for the opportunity to set the record straight about the pending Illinois legislation that relates to Illinois Public Electric Utilities, not including Batavia's. And I had hoped to say this first so that I could short-circuit your discussion because I believe that you need to know all of the problematic language discussed in the March 6 memo is under negotiation. I have had the privilege of participating in the negotiating sessions once in January and again yesterday. I have been invited to the continuing negotiations that are scheduled for this coming Friday, March 14th. Now, it's been mentioned that Sierra Club is the driver behind this, apparently, but I can assure you, it is not. There is a coalition of members that, in this negotiating team on one side, which is comprised of Janet Yang Rohr, the representative for Naperville, Senator Elman's office, Sierra Club has a representative there as the speaker for the Illinois Clean Jobs Coalition, the City of Naperville is there, the Naperville and Environmental and Sustainability Task Force is there, and I am there as a member of the ICJC Municipal Cooperative Working Group. So those are the team on the one side that are the proponents for this bill. The members of the team who are on your side and who are representing you at these negotiations is the Illinois Municipal Utilities Association. You are a member of IMUA. You just paid your 2025 membership dues in the amount of $13,000. And for that fee, you have representatives from IMUA at the table representing your interests. And I can tell you that yesterday, those representatives specifically said that they were representing the interests and the concerns of the three NIPA members. So you are being represented at that table. During the first 75 minutes of the negotiations yesterday, four of these so-called problems were identified, that were identified in the memo, were resolved. We had discussions that resolved them. I don't know what red line version Mr. Home is looking at, but I do know for a fact that the red line version I saw yesterday had references to the Inflation Reduction Act of 2022 stricken with a comment from the representative from the Sierra Club saying, we accept IMUA's striking of this language. The memo claimed that Batavia will have to pay for its own integrated resource plan as well as a separate plan for NIPA. This issue has been discussed and resolved. We are excluding NIPA from the bill's IRP requirements. The language that seemed to imply that Batavia will have to complete an IRP within 12 months from the passage of the legislation, that was noted in the memo, that's been changed. The dates have been adjusted to provide two years for completion of the first IRP. And finally, the language that created the concern that the Illinois Power Agency will have some kind of an authority to review and comment and throw it back at you, an IRP, has been modified to eliminate that interpretation. So that was what has happened in the first 75 minutes of that conversation. Unfortunately, I had a pre-existing commitment and I had to miss the last 75 minutes. So I know the conversation continued. It was cordial when I left, and I can't imagine that it wasn't cordial for the latter part of the conversation. So I cannot talk to the issue about the stakeholder process that would be run by the IPA. They were in the middle of that discussion when I left. But you have to remember, there are at least 42 municipal utilities in this state. And other than Batavia and about five other municipalities, the rest of them are very, very small, 1,000, 2,000 population, 5,000. And this bill covers everyone, all municipal utilities in the state. Yes, maybe Batavia has the ability, maybe Naperville has the ability, and Winnetka has the ability, and Springfield has the ability to run its own stakeholder meetings. But does Carmi? Does Carol? Does Lad? You know, we have to do this for everybody. And you cannot tell me that intelligent people can't craft language that is going to make that a fair process for all of those municipal utilities. The same thing with this boogeyman about somebody from Peoria coming and looking at IRP, our IRP and commenting on it. You know, we know legislators, they can, they easily can figure out, they're not going to take a call from me in South Carolina, they can figure out how to do that. We can figure out how to keep comments on Batavia's IRP coming from Batavia residents The other one I wanted to talk about is this open meetings amendment. And I think, again, it's, there's a lot of misinterpretation, both to the content and the intent. As I have said on several occasions, I have not personally experienced any intentional lack of transparency in Batavia. However, I can tell you that as recently as this past February, an IMEA member municipality went into closed session citing the purchase, sale, or delivery of electricity exception, and that is the exception. Look how broad that thing is. They went into executive session, a closed session. So it's clear that at a minimum, Illinois cities and villages and their electric agencies misunderstand this exception to the Open Meetings Act and improperly use it to keep discussions about electric utilities out of the public eye. So in closing, I am asking you, please, wait and see. Please do not sabotage the ongoing negotiations on this legislation by voting to oppose this bill. Please do not hamstring your own IMUA representatives by voting to oppose this bill. The parties are negotiating in good faith and they're trying to make a good bill that all public utilities and their ratepayers can live with. And that includes us here in Batavia. Please do not buy the fabric, excuse me, fabricated argument that the legislation sponsors are not being, quote, "open and honest," end quote, or are strategically trying to impose stricter environmental regulations under the guise of transparency. I I know that for a fact that this is not true. And please do not make a knee-jerk decision to oppose this legislation based upon statements that are entirely inaccurate, hyperbolic, deceptive, and patently offensive. Thank you. I appreciate your time, and I truly do hope you let this play out, let these negotiations continue. Your representative is there at the table, and with good common sense, I think we can come up with a good bill to pass here. Thank you.
Before you leave, can we, is there any way we can get a copy of either the minutes or, you know, what happened at the meeting, what things they came to agreement on? Is there a way to get that?
I think-
So we can know what's going on? So if it does get to the point where it has things in it that we can support, we can relay that back?
I think at some point in time, there are no minutes, this was not recorded-
Okay.
-that I am aware of. At some point in time, somebody has to go and sit down and put the red lines into the bill. I don't think that has happened yet from yesterday, okay? Whether it happens between now and Friday, it's possible. And I can certainly ask whether this, if I get a copy, whether I can publicly share, or, you know, share it with you. I'd be happy to if I can.
I think it's important for everybody to realize, too, we have somebody here that lives three blocks away from here that's in that room, that's part of this discussion. So I think you know what we have talked about-
I do.
-and what we've said. And as they're trying to craft this bill, to have somebody that's in that room, I think is important for us. You know, I don't know that we had somebody in the room at every meeting that happened during the Prairie State negotiations, or that we felt like we did, but we were given only select information. And I think now, we pay a lot more attention to it, and we look at a lot more things. And that's one of the reasons why I think there are things that we have talked about over the meetings that we've had on this, that are things that we look at and say, wow, really, do we need that? I'm okay with this, but I really don't like that. You know, the things that we have discussed, and, you know, I'm glad that you were able to give us the information on some of the questions we had, some of the things that we opposed, that have been settled or have been changed. Because, you know, we don't get a report back from IMUA about what happened there-
Right.
-or exactly what's going on. We just trust that they know what our position is and that they're there doing what we want.
And they are. I can tell you that they are, okay? And, yes, I'm more than happy, you know, to share whatever information that I can. You have to remember that I am, through my energy work, and especially with this municipal cooperative working group, I'm trying to not, I don't always agree with some of the things you are objecting to here. For example, the IPA submitting the IRPs to IPA and having them run a stakeholders process, unlike, you know, some of the arguments that have been made against that. I see that as a way to achieve uniformity across the state, so that one city isn't doing a great job and another city is just doing the bare minimum, you know, and not really, you know, kind of giving mouth service to the stakeholder process than really running a true stakeholder process. So, you know, but, you know, I am aware of the things, and when, you know, these come up for discussion, you know, I kind of think about the things that you guys have said, you know. But like I said, you know, a lot of this is language, and we can craft language. I mean, that's what legislation is. That's what letter writing is. That's what legal documents are, you know? It's language and how you craft it. And I'm confident we can craft good language that will basically address most, if not all, of these concerns.
Kevin?
And playing right off that, I think, you know, what I'm hearing, I think I agree with Gary in that now is the right time, because we're in the middle of negotiations. And I hear you say that in negotiations, when you craft language, right? That makes a whole lot of sense. One challenge, you know, I'm sort of being asked to either oppose or approve this, right? But doing negotiations all day, every day, I know that if somebody else were sitting in my room saying, "I oppose that based on this rumor I heard out in the hall," that undermines your negotiation capacity, right? I sort of really feel like this is way premature for us to be deciding if we're opposing or not opposing this legislation. It sounds like we're right in the middle of the negotiation. You got some crazy ideas going back and forth, you have people agreeing to things, disagreeing. I'm sure there's talk of, you know, in back rooms of leverage, and we'll agree to this if they agree to that. And if we come out and we start saying, "We oppose this," I think we're really undermining the process that's in play. What I'm hearing here is that, first off, it may be onerous to us. It sounds like the folks in the room recognize that for a smaller municipality, we're not ComEd, we're not one of the big guys, that they're thinking about that. I'm hearing a loss of local control, which is something I'm worried about. Stakeholder meetings are a way to bring local control back into it. I hope that as the stakeholder meeting conversations continue, that it's not just statewide stakeholders, it's also local stakeholders are built in. I do think that environmental organizations have an important role to play. They are stakeholders. Peoria is a stakeholder, and so am I, right? I'm a Batavia resident. And I hope that in the negotiations, and I hope that to our representatives who are at the table, we send the message loud and clear, that if stakeholder input is part of that, and it should be, because good policy comes from good stakeholder engagement, that local stakeholders are vital and key to that process, along with whatever the state is going to do. And I guess sort of the last sort of thing, I'm just going to say here, is that like this process is so early that I'm just a little befuddled as to why we're sort of kind of, why I'm being asked as an elected official to take a stand on state legislation that is currently in, very much in the negotiation phase, and very much the stakeholders are moving back and forth.
I can answer that.
I was going to answer that. I was going to say, because if you don't pay attention now and you don't get your input in now-
Yeah, let me rephrase that.
-you don't get a voice later when it gets to the point that it's on the floor-
Yeah, yeah, let me rephrase that, right? I know why you're asking me.
And it gets voted in 12 hours.
I absolutely understand why you're asking me. I'm just saying that for me to give an answer right now would be an irresponsible thing for us to do. And so what I think is important is that we get an idea of what we want-
Right.
-rather than take a stand on if we oppose or not.
From a process standpoint, this goes back even to 2020 when CG was being negotiated. For literally the last five to six years, there's been legislation in Springfield, and every one of those years, we've come to city council for an initial discussion, which is exactly what we're having tonight. No one has asked anyone to pass a resolution. No one has even presented a resolution tonight to take a position on any specific issue. It is simply a discussion tonight to get council up and aware of all the issues from all sides, and then in the future, we'll follow up with more specific items if that's what council wants us to do.
Respectfully, in the memo, it did say, "We should oppose." So that is asking-
Well, yeah, that staff recommendation, that is not-
And a recommendation is asking us to do something.
Right. And of those line items that are there, I mean, we know now from somebody that's in the room doing these negotiations, that those things have changed. So to me, we need to applaud the things that change that are in our favor, that we want changed. Susan needs to know that and go back to the meeting that she goes to on Friday and be able to say that, okay, Batavia understands where we're at, knows the things that have changed, that are things they want changed, and here's two more things that, you know, were discussed that we haven't come to resolution on. What can I go back and tell them after we have this meeting Friday? And I think it's very good for us to be involved at this juncture, so that way, we can get that communication two-way with the state as they're making these decisions. Because if we don't, it could go from, you know, hasn't been discussed for six months to on the floor being voted as a bill tomorrow. And that happens.
And that's what our representatives are there for, and it should be brought to our attention.
And that's why we have to be involved in these conversations now.
I'm not saying we don't be involved. I'm simply saying that.
I just want to be careful about who represents who in the room, Susan, and you even alluded to that, to say-
Yeah.
I'm happy to facilitate the discussion, but I am not representing Batavia.
Right, I understand that, and that we make that distinction. And we do appreciate the fact that, I don't know how many hours you spend on this every week, but you're involved in this, and you know what's going on there. We are not down there, so we don't have that sense or know what's been discussed.
And I want to say one more thing, because I don't think this has been said at all, either last year or, you know, certainly now. But all of you, you know, as I've mentioned to you in the past, because you are a municipal utility, and because you and, you know, the other 34, or no, 42 or so municipal utilities in the state of Illinois are exempt from regulation by the Illinois Commerce Commission, you, sitting here, are the ICC for Batavia. You, 14 plus the mayor. And you all know you are not experts in electric utilities. And it's a very difficult position that you have been put into by being in control of an electric utility. This bill, with the changes it is asking for with regard to Integrated Resources Plans, Open Meetings Changes, changes for rural cooperatives in how they operate their electric utilities, this bill is trying to give city councils, village boards, co-op boards, more information through the IRP process that will help you do your job. It is not designed to take control from you. I have never heard once, "Oh, we're going to put this in because we get a little piece of that, and we put that in, and we're going to take a little piece of that, and before you know it, we're going to have control of all those municipal utilities." I have not heard that once. The whole objective of this bill is to give you more tools to do a better job running your municipal utilities. That's it. So I really hope that you can take that to heart and look at this bill, read it when you get a chance, and understand that that is what the impetus for this is.
I think a really important distinction that needs to be made is, right now, the ICC watches over the investor-owned utilities-
Yes.
-which are private corporations-
Yes.
-that make billions of dollars of profit every year. And they, you know, oversee what rates can be charged to the customers in those states. This body is overseeing an electric utility that is a not-for-profit, and that is, the employees work for the city of Batavia, the people who are the head of the electric utility are employees of the city of Batavia. I think it's a very big distinction to make about whether a municipal utility needs to the oversight of the ICC, who is there to control private corporations.
This bill does not do that. You are the ICC. The 14 of you sitting here are Batavia's ICC. You control the utility. If I have a complaint about the utility, it come to you. You make the decision as to whether I'm right or the, you know, the utility is right. You know, if I have a complaint about rates, I come to you.
So this is an argument for not ceding control to other organizations?
You're not ceding, this bill does not cede control to the state of Illinois, period.
Why do they want the data, then?
I didn't, I don't know. I don't know.
I do know.
Because I, I mean, I will ask that question.
They want to impose something on what's-
No, Tim.
Yeah.
You're making a speculation. You're making speculation. I don't know.
Sure.
And you don't know.
It'll be a revenue source for the state, that's what they're going to gain.
Exactly.
So I would just point out that Mrs. Russo did point out that we are, probably the 14 of us would not meet the foundational requirement to be an expert in electrical utilities. I would point out that the people in attendance at this meeting yesterday, I can pretty much guarantee that Senator Elman is not an expert on municipal electrical utilities either. So just because, I'm just saying, don't put full faith in everything that people at this committee are doing as well, because I don't know what their foundational requirements are to be experts at electrical utilities either, okay? So I am here, my purpose for what I see is to protect the city of Batavia. And I will rely on the staff that we have employed here at the city, who we do have experts in expert utilities, to give us guidance, recommendations, and interpretations of what's going on. Because that's what staff's for, that's what their expertise is in, and that's what we should be relying upon as it relates to the city of Batavia, who we represent. That's my point.
Anybody else over here? Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to comment? Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to say, I was here as the mayor when the IMA Municipal Electric Utility was originally created. And I got invited down to a meeting in Springfield that I think lasted two and a half days. And I saw a lot of shenanigans going on there. There was all the big electrical folks in the state were in the room trying to put together some kind of a package that somebody could make a lot of money out of. And I was very discouraged by what I saw, because I could see this wasn't really meant to be, given each one of the municipal utilities its own independence or its own control, it was going to put something together that somebody else could make a lot of money off. So I came back to the city council, and when they voted on it, I publicly sat in this room and said, "I don't think this is a good idea." And it was found on the front page of the newspaper, quoted, and I've got some people in Batavia that I think still keep those articles, and every now and then, they'll fly them at me, that I was there and said that I did not support the creation of this agency when it was done. And so I sit here tonight, and I listen to what's just been said, and I appreciate that we've got a citizen that goes down there and gets involved and understands what's going on, because it appears to me the same postures and same deals that were proposed, I don't know, 20 years ago, are still kind of on the table, being talked about as far as putting stuff together and pulling some games off. So I would strongly suggest that we don't jump into this and approve anything for a while until there's some much better further understanding as to what's going on, because this is like, we're repeating the movie here a little bit in my eyes, as far as what I'm seeing going on with what they're now trying to do. And there's, you know, there's billions of dollars behind this electric utility in Illinois, and there's a lot of money to be made by a lot of people, or a lot of companies, only a couple of them really, I suppose, at the end. But we are, we really, I applaud Batavia's independence and its diehard nature that we're not going to jump into something that's going to really put us into a bad place for many future generations to have to deal with, and all we do is continue to spend, 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 and give, give, give. And we really don't get the parts of the deal that we should be getting.
Just real quick, I want to thank Susan for all of her dedication and hard work on this. I may sound like a big opponent of it, but, you know, what you're doing is, you know, what should be getting done, but I unfortunately- know, what should be getting done. But I unfortunately get squirrely with the state of Illinois.
The question that I have is, if we could pursue this without obligation, you know, I think we should. The question I have is, is there any language in there that gives us the option, any kind of options, whether we want to be involved? If this is a state bill, isn't this going to be state law, and we will have to comply?
Right. And it's another unfunded mandate for us to have to comply to if, say, it was to be a plan that you had to come up with every year, we'd have to spend the money on it every year. And the ratepayers would end up paying that. Can we get your name for the record, sir?
Pardon?
Get your name for the record.
It's Phil Odo, 445 Elizabeth Street, Batavia.
Thank you.
The other is, well, what you just brought up, is there a risk here to be levied any expenses?
I believe that that's one of the endgames to this, is to find out, and then whatever the mandate is out of Springfield, we'll have to abide by. And our ratepayers will have to pick up that cost. So if they decide that, you know, 70% of our power needs to come from a wind farm or a solar panel, and we have to go there, that could be an endgame. I know that's not what's being discussed, but that's a reason for having this.
I have to agree with you. I'm wondering if there is another endgame, and this is laying groundwork for it. And I'm not against the Sierra Club, but I don't know what their involvement is. And the first thing that I think of is some environmental thing. And I don't know if there's going to be some sort of obligation with regards to our utility.
One seat at the table. So they're one seat at the table, so they're a part of it, but they're not a driving force of it.
Okay. And I don't know, if we're going to get feedback by the organization that we're paying dues to, as to, you know, has anybody gotten anything from them?
I can say that this, what Gary is presenting, is things that are coming from IMUA, and that they do keep the staff of the electric utility advised on movement on legislation. And when we see movement, that's how it ends up as a discussion item on this committee of the whole. Another example would be back when the CIGU bill was first introduced. Both IMUA and Gary himself read through all 609 pages of that legislation, and identified every single section that would affect municipal utilities. And we had many, many discussions here. So IMUA Legislative Affairs is just one aspect of our membership with them. They're an association for the good of their members. So they also do training. They also have a mutual aid aspect to it as well. So I don't know if you remember a couple of years ago, when we had the EF0 tornado cut right through the heart of our downtown. There were other municipal electric utilities in Illinois that sent their employees and equipment here to Batavia to help us recover from that. So that $13,000 in dues is also going to pay for things like that. And Gary, did you have another?
Oh, just very quickly, that at this time of year, Stacy Wilson, who is the legislative representative from the IMUA, she and I have email correspondence or telephone calls almost daily at this time of year. So we're very much in communication.
That's the extent of my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, that brings up a great point. You know, in addition to, you know, somehow passing what some of our recommendations are for some of the language that, you know, affects us the most, you know, is that something that we could also pass along to our representatives, to Stacy, you know, to say, hey, we're sending this down not only from this side, but this is, you know, CC all the people on it?
Absolutely. As well as, you know, our elected official, the other elected officials who may not be part of the working group or the committee that this will be sent to. But eventually, they're going to be asked to vote on this legislation too. So we like to keep them aware of what aspects of that legislation could impact us either positively or negatively.
I'm sure.
Publico 623 Elm Street. So I was not planning to say anything, but Gary said something that triggered me. So I do computational modeling, and I have done electrical computational modeling. When someone says, we're going to take your models, they're not taking your code. They're not stealing any IP. They can benchmark these codes, and that's what we often do. Other codes, we benchmark them. So if someone wants your code from another company that is running some model on your electrical grid, they should be allowed to run that code. They should verify your model. They should verify your inputs and outputs. That is not taking IP. Just want to make sure that's understood. It's a simple point. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? And again, thank you, Susan, for the update and the input, and, you know, any information that you can provide for us when you receive it, if you're down there Friday. You know, it's great to have somebody within our municipality that's willing to do that. So thank you for that.
I just wanted to make one more comment, because it did come up. The cost for an IRP, the bill is, at least as it's currently drafted, does have a mechanism by which cities can get state money to pay for that. And I know everybody's poo-pooing the state and money, blah, 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 blah. But that is in there. Okay? So it's not a totally unfunded, you know, mandate. You know, there is an opportunity for that kind of reimbursement, at least for part of the cost, you know. So I want to just make that clear.
I think we need to talk about the qualifications for that. The first sentence in that section says, if appropriated. So if, that's if appropriated by the state, that they'll provide funding. And you have to use a consultant through the IPA that is either chosen for you, or you get to choose from their list. That language is still being worked on. But it is not, we could just use bradle and get reimbursed by the state. It's using the state's consultant to do it. So there are qualifications there to get this free money. And free money doesn't come just out of the sky. We're all paying for it. We all pay for it in our taxes.
I think staff knows where we're at, our discussion's at, and just wait for another round of, you know, what they're doing to try to craft a new bill. Okay. And up next will be project status.
I just have a few things this evening. The communications department sent out a media release and shared on the website and social the RFP for the Tin Shop. And I saw that a couple of news publications had picked that up and broadcast that. Seems like there's a lot of chatter on the socials as well, about people really want to see someone do something with that building. Thus far, the someone has not come forward, but we remain hopeful. We also, it came from a request from the Batavia Active Transportation Commission. They were looking for one of those easy-up tents that they could use at farmers market and various events. And as opposed to use the appropriation that we give for the commissions, the communications department said, hey, you know, the city could really use one of those anyway. So we purchased it with general fund under the supplies budget within the administration department, and that way it can be used by BEC, by Baytech, and also by the city when it needs it. And Public Works, the three-story portion of the government center building here is scheduled to have its roof replaced. It's anticipated that we'll do this in late spring or early summer. And in the fire department, Deputy Chief Lucas and Battalion Chiefs Belcitas Swinski and Hogan started the next required training for the fire department accreditation process. This next part of the training is self-paced with several lectures, assessments, and homework projects, and it'll run through the month of March. And that fire department accreditation is part of the new fire department strategic plan. In finance, they made the application for the third round of lead service line replacement loans. And also, I just wanted to point out that many municipalities actually hire an external consultant to invest their money for them. But Peggy, with her exceptional experience and skills, does that for the city of Batavia, which saves us from having to hire an outside consultant. And she's very good at that. She purchased a T note right before the rates draft last week. So we thank her very much. And in the midst of doing everything that she is doing for the audit process, she also managed to make that astute investment on her behalf. So I just wanted to call her out for a special thanks.
All right. Does anybody have any questions, Laura?
I do. I have had a couple residents ask me about the money for the food pantry. And so, you know, kind of along that lines, with some of our federal funding, where are we kind of sitting? What are we looking at? What may we need to have a discussion down the road, and what impacts on projects that were budgeted for this year that we may have?
Sure. So at this point, while that Monday memorandum that came out several weeks ago that said that all grant funding had been frozen, and then thereafter, there was some sort of retraction to it, we believe that our HUD funding that we received to move the food pantry, it still seems like there may be bureaucratic reasons that have been impediments to us receiving that funding. So we're still working on that. I think that if we still have not received those funds in the next two weeks, that will really give me cause for concern, at which time I'll work through our federal elected officials to determine what really is behind it. So for the general public, the city of Batavia was extremely fortunate back in 2023 to receive what's called community project funding grant of $3 million to move our food pantry. It was through Lauren Underwood's office when we were still part of her district. Since then, we are now in Congressman Foster and Krishnamurti's district at this time. But those funds need to be expended on moving the food pantry by 2031. So, you know, we're not dealing with a real dire time crunch here either, in terms of working through this. However, the city has expended $2 million in purchasing 916 First Street to be the new location for the food pantry. And so while we have submitted all of the necessary paperwork through HUD, and HUD has provided the authorization to U.S. Treasury to reimburse those funds, they have not yet hit our bank account. So I will continue to provide you with updates on the status of that. At this time, I cannot confirm that there's been any freezing of processes. It still seems like it might be a bureaucratic issue.
Any other projects?
And there are no other projects for which funding has been held up at this point.
And I want to just add to that. I've had several conversations with Congresswoman Underwood, who felt very strongly about getting that money. One time, she was so involved in it, she asked me to meet her at the Twin Elms out on Main Street. And I get out there, and she's sitting out in the car. And we walked over and looked at the building, and well, she said, this is an ideal situation. I'm really for this. So she went right away and put the appropriations in and got it approved. And so I think right now, she's fighting a good fight in Washington about, hey, where's, Batavia's already got the facility. We need to cover the costs here because we agreed to do that. So that'll be a real home run hitter or eye catcher for a lot of people if for some reason, they decide not to give us the money when we've already had a commitment for it.
Anybody else have any others tonight? Abby?
Wanted to propose a future discussion if another alderperson will join me. There's, it was brought to me that there might be an error in one of our tables, the Site Development Regulations, Multifamily Residential Districts Table 2.203, in our code. Basically, that measures the setbacks for multifamily homes and accessory structures, et cetera. And the logic in the table and across other zoning is, you know, the greater the density, the bigger the setback. And throughout the table, that's consistent until one spot, and it's flip-flopped. The numbers are flip-flopped. So I wanted to have a conversation about kind of the implications of that, and maybe just correcting that error if we agree that it is an error in the future.
Bring that up and discuss it at a future call meeting.
I have like three.
I'll join.
And you'll join?
Yeah.
Okay. The other one, Alderman Beck, I was wondering if you, we had had some conversation about a littering ordinance. Would you also like to propose a future discussion about the potential for having a littering ordinance?
Or absolutely. I think this came up a while back, the baggies with notes and rocks that get tossed on here.
And two to join on that? Yes?
Yes.
I appreciate the baggies at the end of my concrete driveway when they want to do seal coating.
Okay. If there are any other others, I look for a motion for adjournment.
Still moved.
I wish myself a second by Ayazi.